Call the February 22nd, 2024 Nelson County School Board Work Session to Order. Budget Work Session. All rise and see. The pledge. I almost said single nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. All right. All right, first item after that, item C. I need a motion to approve the agenda if there are no changes that need to be made for discussion.
I mean, we approve the agenda as presented. Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we're at superintendent's comments.
Well, I feel like we were just right here, just a second ago. We have, spring sports have gotten into full kind of tryout mode and some others will start next week. But really, just the focus has been paying attention to the legislative sessions and awaiting the arrival of the House and Senate budgets, which we received later Sunday, or some point in time on Sunday. So with that, just been working through, trying to process the information. We are still waiting a, an official cap tool from the state. However, I think it's pretty complicated in terms of when you look at the Senate and the House budgets and how those things fit into a cap tool. So that is what we are really awaiting to see how to work through that. But we've been in conversation with the state superintendent. She's aware. I know that they're working tirelessly to try to make sure they do what they can to support the school systems and calculating and understanding how the budgets, the three different budgets, impact them uniquely. So that's really what's been taking place since the last time we met.
Just a little minute again. Any questions? Okay. Moving along, under 3A, we will have an update to the fiscal year 2425 budget from Ms. Shannon Irvin and Dr. Manus.
Good news and bad news. Good news first. Good news is that our health insurance came in at a flat, no increase for the coming year. So that was a big. Exactly right. Exactly right. So the governor's budget that you had, that we had presented to you, I have changed that superintendent's recommended budget to take out the health insurance increase that we had put in. And so the numbers that I'm showing tonight are going to be $300,000 different than what I had presented at the last meeting. So the House and Senate did meet and they have very different budgets, most notably in terms of compensation for staff, where the governor's budget had a 1% bonus in his for staff with no cost of living increases. The House and Senate have taken a very different approach. The Senate has put in a 3% budget for the coming year and the House of Representatives, 3.375. So I reworked our budgets, taking out the bonus because neither the House nor the Senate include the bonus in there. I took the bonus out. On the Senate's budget, I put in the 3%. On the House of Representatives, I put in the 3.375, assuming that we would put those salary increases across all salaries in the budget. So that did affect full time and part time. So this would be what we would be looking at if we were able to do that. So looking at the revised governor's budget, we would be at a deficit of $2,686,29. For the Senate budget, we did receive a bit more funding, though our expenses increased due to the 3% raise. So our deficit is $1,853.12. And then the House balloons up to $2,607,876. So we have basically $800,000 spread between the best case scenario and the worst case scenario.
And when you take a look at the 3% raise and incorporating the 3.75, one of the reasons is that through, through many discussions locally with other divisions, it sounds like, you know, we can assume that at least 3% will probably carry over with whatever is, is, you know, it'll be 3 or 3.75. And so that's why using that in our budget numbers, because again, it goes back to staying competitive. If we start dropping back on those raises and everybody else is giving that, we're going to fall behind. And that makes it already more difficult to compete in that environment.
I had a regional finance director's meeting yesterday and everyone was looking at 3%. What they were anticipating.
So is not the majority difference between the three is just the raise amount?
That is the biggest difference that affects us from what we can tell. We don't have a cap tool and knowing, they have some other programs, but we're not sure if they would affect Nelson or not.
Yeah, we're fine a little blind, a little bit. I mean, there's probably like 10 different categories. If you take a look in the breakdown of some things, that you see differences between the three different budgets. The, some of the biggest, you know, you're going to see it at the at risk. You're going to see it in the basic aid where you see some of those difference. You see minimal difference, but it is there. English as a second language. We do see, from the start of the school year, we've seen an increase in our ESAL students. But definitely, if you had compared it to last year, and I'm not sure there would be any indicators that that wouldn't carry through this year into next year. So we do see some differences. Like I said, at risk is you see, I would say in the at risk category, you see some significant differences. Again.
The grocery hold harmless.
Yeah, grossly, gross, grocery hold harmless is another area. So identifying where we see the variances, again, it's important to note, we don't have that cap tool. So.
Can you explain the grocery hold harmless again to me? It's like a tax that they.
The removal of the 1%.
And then they gave us the extra money so that it didn't hurt us.
Correct, yeah. It's the harmless piece, kind of like what we would really love to see for the LCI. And it seems very unprecedented that this year, above years, when you have around 22 school division or localities that experience an increase and particularly several that have a pretty drastic increase, that there would be no hold harmless when in years past, that was carried over for the two years, so you can adjust. So, you know, those are things that we've advocated to our delegates, our representatives about this is hugely impactful to our locality and as a result to us. And so that is something we have, we have shared with everybody who's willing to listen. And those who aren't willing to listen, we're still sharing it with them because it's important to see that impact. It's an impact on a community and all the extensive kind of tentacles that reach from there and how it impacts it. So that is one that we're kind of, quite frankly, shocked at.
That there's not a hold harmless for the.
For the LCI.
For the LCI change.
So I've got a question, and this might be for the many millions of people at home that are actually watching this, looking at the numbers. So there's differences in the recommended expenditures. I think I know the answer to it. I'm just asking. Like the governor's budget, the recommended expenditure was 32525476. And then it went up 500,000 and change for the, one of the others. I don't know what that is, potential Senate, and then it went up 600, Senate, and then it went up 600 some odd, 611. Is that all primarily just due to what they recommend for salaries for SOQs?
Primarily.
For the governor's budget, you get to take out the 1%.
Right.
For the Senate and then add 3%, and then that affects all your fringe benefits that are tied to salaries.
And I know it's Tetris math, but.
And there are some other built in things that don't fall into the line. You know, like I think that's the other piece is particularly, I believe in the Senate bill, the Senate proposal, is there's just some other things that it doesn't fit neatly into that box that we usually get with our cap tool. And figuring out, you know, are there, are there expectations with some of those expenditures?
I know that they have said that they're not going to touch anything with kind of a hold harmless with the LCI this year, but is there any sort of appeal process for us to go back and with that number, even the county to go back and say?
Do they recalculate it?
Yeah.
I think I can communicate with my counterpart at the county level.
Right.
Because some of those.
It's so out of line.
But remember, with these LCI indices, they're, they're taken from 2020, particularly, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you take it like the real estate and it's coming from 2020, what was happening in 2020, you had the pandemic and you had people moving because they were working remotely. And I think if you look at some of the historical data, where some people were moving to and buying homes, it was the areas that were beautiful but had strong internet. So if you take a look at, you know, just doing research when I was looking into this job, they named Nellie's Ford a Zoom town because people could move there and live there, but still be working from wherever. And so you see, you know, there's a, the biennium, it lapses two years. So we're looking at things from two years ago. Well, if you take a historical look at what was going on, there may be some indicators. That's also when you start to see a boom in the real estate market.
And if those people that move in are affluent, that affects your gross income.
Gross income then, and perhaps no kids. Gross income and then other revenues and things that it's hard for us to kind of.
Didn't, that, that boom didn't change the profile of our student, though. It didn't change the demographics of our students, I don't think.
Well, and I would argue that if we were, our enrollment was dropping at that time, which we did see an enrollment drop across the nation, you see a response to protocols by homeschool, private school moved away. So we do see a change in our demographics in that the enrollment drops. And we're starting to come back a little bit, but that does impact, and then that impacts the LCI because you're having a change in the population, you have a change in enrollments and all of that. So the, the, there is a little bit to that because of that impact. Will we see some other places in two years see a different shift and experience what we are? Maybe, I don't know. Will we see a drop? Or, or not a drop, but you know, a settling. But those are, those are, it's a complicated formula and there's a lot that goes into it. And I think that that's, it's hard to anticipate that. I don't think, I don't think really anybody, at least that I'm aware of, anticipated this kind of a jump for us.
I mean, it's all relative. You know, Northern Virginia or Tidewater gets poorer in relationship to us. Our composite index goes up and theirs goes down. So, you know, it's.
It's all like part of the pie is what it is. So when people say it's not a pie, this actually is a pie.
There's funding that's coming in and how it's distributed is based off of this formula. So it doesn't mean more, more, more money may be coming in, but how it's distributed is adjusted. You know, so I know we have a neighboring locality that also experienced a pretty significant increase, but they, you know, they, it's, it's a gut check and it hits you. But, you know, the, they have a much bigger budget than we do also. You know, so it hits them and it hurts them because it's theirs and it hits us, it hurts us. We actually increased more than they did, but they're already at a higher LCI.
Right.
And it's, it's just very interesting. We're not, we're not the only ones in this boat, which is concerning. You have 132 school divisions and 22 are experiencing this. That's not a small thing.
Of the 22, it feels like we were a little bit unique in that category. Yeah, and, and we're unique in that category and, right?
Being small and rural.
Small and rural, yeah. And with a high socioeconomically disadvantaged student population, I mean.
Yes. And, you know, a unique diverse population, when you take a look at the growing ESAL for a rural, small rural division and sped population and economically disadvantaged or an at risk population. So you put all those factors together and an enrollment that, you know, is fluttering.
Yep.
We get some kids in, we have some leave, so.
All the formulas in the world sometimes don't replace just good logic to me.
And again, just like we shared at the last meeting, there is conversations at the state level and with a lot of different individuals about funding formulas. But those changes, like everything else, you know, you wouldn't want that to move too quickly and have it be inaccurate and have it just create a different problem. You know, solving one problem creates a different. But they are looking at various models, but it doesn't go quickly. That change won't happen this year, obviously, and perhaps not even next year.
But a whole harmless would help a lot.
Yes, and that's what I'm curious, like, you know, you hear there's money out there. How are we dedicating those funds? If you took those 22 schools, those 22 localities and the influx of the change in the LCI and the impact, what is that total? You know, how, how could that be addressed? Not just us. I would want us to be first, but not just us. And how does that help us? And again, you know, we all want, we all want that piece of the pie. We all want the money, but ultimately, it's because of who we serve. And the service that we provide is a vital aspect to our community, but also democracy. The more educated the citizenry, the more successful the citizenry, and it just cycles itself.
Right. Well, here's the concern. I mean, we say that, okay, maybe it'll catch up a year or two. It's not going to happen fast. Problem is, we got, we're going to have a group of kids, again, that are going to be impacted by what we can or can't do because we don't have the local ability necessarily to make up 2, 2.5, 3, you know, whatever that shortage is. So, you know, it's frustrating for me to sit here and say, well, you know, maybe they'll catch up in a year, they'll come up with something. There is an immediate impact to our students, to our staff, to everybody, when you have that kind of shortfall that is not reflective of what our capabilities, community truly is.
And that's been exacerbated by COVID and being forced to keep kids out of school. You know?
Yeah, the needs.
I mean, the learning gap has gotten huge.
And, and even without that, it would still be a huge gap. I mean, that just compounds it.
I think the various models that we used during that time period, we all reflected some losses. And, and, but I think where we are feeling is community wide, but in the schools, it's, you know, it's kind of a broken record. It's the mental health piece. And the umbrella it falls under, it manifests itself in a lot of different ways that then impacts attendance, it impacts performance and just comfort levels and all of this. And we continue to battle these things. And while we appreciate money that is coming to us through various initiatives to combat some of these things, that comes at a cost as well because we're having, our human capital is now, we continue to shoulder more and more responsibilities without that adjustment financially or time wise. So our human capital is feeling the strain, whether it is our adult staff or our children who are being impacted this by, you know, you're working your eight hours and it's, it feels like the target is always moving and that it's, you know, never good enough, but yet we're being asked to do more and more with the high quality of instruction that's required with that standard kind of sometimes moving. But then also all of these residual impacts of things that are going on, whether it was COVID related or just this is a population and this is an experience we're all going through right now, all of it accumulates. And that's why it's so important that, you know, again, I told the story, when will this stop? When, when we, when we can focus on the things that we're supposed to focus on, and that's the high quality instruction, providing the positive environments. But because of the needs of our students, we continue to keep shouldering the responsibilities of a lot of other expectations. And, and when you do that, you have to have more resources. You have to have more people. So that costs more.
You know, even with the salary savings, we still, we still occur more per student, you know, than we can come up with. And, you know, and it, you know, is just a burden on the people that provide, you know, the services. And, you know, just, you know, this week, we've had somebody bail on us and we're trying to fix that problem, so. You know, and it's not really our problem, but it becomes our problem.
There is, there is a secondary trauma that takes place when you deal with these types of experiences because you absorb it, you absorb the energy, you absorb the, the stress of others. And while still, you have your outside life.
Right.
That you have to put on hold for a little while while you're dealing with children for eight hours. And that's just when you're in the building.
Yes.
Okay, so that's not even factoring in the other hours that are spent outside up until, for most of our people, up until about nine o'clock at night and for others later. And so you start adding all of this together and they have their outside lives as well and their outside stressors. So all of it just starts to build and build and build. And, and like fortunately, we are a division that is filled with people who love what they do and they love the kids and they love their coworkers. But that, that only goes so far after a while. When then you finally have to understand, I've got, I've got to take care of myself. And it's really hard to compete, you know, we're competing with outside entities that don't have those accountability measures that we do, but like, hey, we'll match your pay, you'll work less and you won't have some of these other stressors. It's really difficult to compete with. Oh, and you can work from home.
Right.
So, you know, these are, we're competing and I say this all the time, we're not necessarily losing out, losing our staff to K through 12 public institutions. We're losing it to higher ed, to outside private entities and things of that nature or, or other either public jobs that it just doesn't have the same environment.
A lot of factors going.
But I appreciate that people are willing to stick it out and do it because it's necessary, it's critical. It's, without it, we really put ourselves in a difficult spot.
Any other question, comments?
Shannon, we expect better days next time we see you.
I will do my best.
Can you guys remind me of the schedule? So this is our work session and then we'll have, like, what's the next step after this and timing and all that?
Well, we think March, March the 9th.
March 14th, I believe, is our next school board meeting.
Right, but the 9th, we should be getting.
Oh, right, right, yes.
The compromise budget.
Around the 9th, we should be getting that budget there where they've come to kind of that compromise, like she said, that compromise and understanding this is what's.
Every time they get in the numbers or getting a signed budget.
Oh, no, it's just the numbers.
And then they still go to the governor.
Right.
But the time last.
But we might be able to update it one more time before.
And then we're supposed to have it for the county in the middle of March, by the 15th or something like that? We're supposed to have the.
County says by April 1st.
Okay. We usually shoot for them at 11.
Usually, so we have our meeting on that Thursday, I think, last year, that next day. He delivered it, yeah.
And they're pretty much well apprised of, I mean, they're paying attention to this as much as we are or.
Mm-hmm, yes. I had a, I had a conversation. I've been having a conversation with Ms. McGary, the county administrator. I had a brief conversation today, just trying to get an understanding, like on your side, what are you hearing? You know, you have revenue sharing divisions in, in counties where they kind of already know what's going on, but, you know, just what, what's happening? But we've tried as best we can, and she was here at the last meeting to understand this is what we're dealing with. We've got three different numbers now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And I appreciate the efforts between her and the board of supervisors trying to also advocate and contact delegates saying, hey. And, and there's been several emails sent and, and we have as well, just trying to say, you really need to pay attention to this because this is, it's not about just trying to grab more money. There, there are children impacted, their families impacted by these things and not just the schools, but it impacts the whole county.
Right.
Especially in a division like this where this is central to everything that goes on in the county.
It's also hiring season, like now the college recruitment fairs are out and not knowing where we stand and what we can do.
Yeah, there's going to be some tough conversations. Yeah, are we going to be able to fill vacancies that we have because someone left or because we know we're going to have a retirement? Or are we going to stand still, not be able to fill that because heaven forbid, we're going to have to cut current positions? And I think that that was a part of the conversation with Ms. McGary today is trying to get a feel because what we also don't want to do is go out and offer these jobs and then have to immediately pull them back and get that reputation.
Sure.
And, and we want to get the best candidates for the job. And if we wait, they're, they're gone. And they, you know, we, we're fortunate right now, we're still, we're interviewing and we're having people coming to us saying, we want to be here. And so that's kind of makes you feel good because we've built up this reputation that this is a good place to be, it's a good place to live, but some of these people are not going to live here, they're going to come to us. And so that begs, you know, you have to make this attractive because they're not, it's not going to be a 10 minute drive. It's going to be 30 to 60 minute drive. So you want to make it attractive to someone making that, that commute, whether it's through fuel costs or time investment, windshield time, and making that worth their while and staying competitive. And so some, you know, when we start talking about what's going to lure a 22 year old coming out of college to be able to come work in Nelson County, they're looking at certain things. You have to make it worth their while. If, if they don't automatically have a connection to housing here, they don't have a family member here, we're able to, to have that land kind of gifted to them or something of that nature, they're going to commute, they're going to come in. And so you have to, you have to, you don't want to lose money because you're driving too far. And so, yeah, there's, there's, there's reasons, there's strategy as to what we do.
So in the meantime, since we don't have a cap tool to use, we'll just wait at this point. I mean, there's really not a whole lot you can do if you can't run things through a cap tool and figure out.
I mean, they, these are the numbers that is best we can evaluate it right now. In our conversation earlier this week with Dr. Coons, she indicated that it's a complicated, like the, and forgive me, I feel like it's the Senate budget, but it could have been the House that just has, the structure of it is so different than what our previous cap tools have been able to handle in terms of the lines that it goes to. So I think, you know, you have Mr. Dickey and the other individuals in, in the finance part of VDOE really trying to figure it out because they know we're, we're looking at this, they know we need this.
All right. Well, thank you. So now we are going to move on to capital approval project funding initiative.
Okay. So you have a summary document of our capital plan and just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything you guys wanted to add or subtract from the plan. And the ranking in terms of what, the red was immediate, the blue was within three years and the green was what was desirable. and the green was what was desirable. The plan, its total is thirty-one million, thirty-eight thousand, five forty, but twenty-four and a half of that is the high school renovation. So it's not as bad as it looks, though it's bad.
I've seen worse.
No, I think it's to, to kind of emphasize, if you really take a look at it, I mean, we've been pretty deliberate about the process that we've gone through to get to that point for the high school renovation and really evaluating the CIP plans and the things that have been on there and sitting on there. And then also, how do we get the most bang for the buck? How do we incorporate all of this that one, that prolongs the longevity of everything that we're doing? But also is systematically taking these things off the list so we don't keep kicking them down the road and get into the same situation we're in now, having to like, we got to do it now. We've got to, we've got to put the money into the renovation at the high school right now. We want to continue to, to really be mindful about that maintenance plans and the operation plans that we have. Because we'll also sooner or later get into that with our buses. You know, and that's what we're trying to work through. We, we kind of have gotten out of sync with replacing our buses and that's going to be on down. Yes, I was being nice.
There's no need to be because we need to, we've talked about this at nauseam in years past. We need to be buying four buses a year every single year without fail to maintain what the recommendations are. And when's the last time we actually bought a school bus, not these two we got on the brain? When's the last time we bought a school bus?
Well, we bought some with Esser two money and we bought two in terms of when the county had bought one, I expected it was like.
Maybe twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen? It's been a while.
Twenty nineteen. Before I came on the board.
At five years.
It was, it was, the last time we bought buses and made them, they made. It was not, it was not a nice. That was not.
That was actually the year before I came on the board.
I think Shannon makes a really good point. Some of these things were purchased with Esser funds. Come September.
Right, Esser funds do not recur.
Yeah, yeah, come June, September 30, 2024, they're gone.
We, we now have identified four school buses out of a need of 20 in the last five years. So we're still sixteen short, no matter where the money came from. And so my point to all that is, is I would argue that the school buses need to be in the operational budget, not in the capital budget. They were thrown in the capital budget a long time ago at the request, I believe, of the county.
I think there, there's recurring stuff that there should be in operating budget and not in a CIP budget, period. A whole lot of other items, they should not be, if we have money left over, they should be have to. This is just running and managing them, period.
I mean, because we're sending kids to Virginia Beach on school buses. And, you know, and if we can't use two of the four newest buses we got, that's a throwing darts at something that's a moving target. You know, so, you know, that's right in line with safety. And, you know, you don't want a school bus of, you know, 20, 30 kids sitting on the side of, you know, 64, 264.
You don't want them sitting on the side of 29.
Yeah, you don't want them sitting anywhere, but in that environment, that, that is not safe. So, I mean, you know, we approved that, that trip. But, you know, that is a safety concern that we're sending these kids that far on a school bus that may or may not be one of the two newest ones we have. So, I mean, you know, I just don't want to think about if something happens, but it, it could. And that's just not safe. It doesn't look good on us and it, and it, everybody, if something happens, it's going to come to us.
Sure it is.
But we can't say, well, we didn't get any money for buses, you know, because I'm not down in the other board, but, you know, we have to have these buses to provide for the students, not only the safety of everyday safety, but safety of these field trips that they are on school buses. You know, and we don't want to take these opportunities away from our kids because we can't provide transportation. You know, then you look at renting a charter bus, which is going to be another cost that we don't have. You know, so, you know, it's, I just think it's.
Well, then you wind up not having, being able to send kids on field trips.
Right, or you, there's another cost. Or there's another cost associated with it to the parent to, to make sure they got safe transportation.
What is, just for my own curiosity, what does, anybody know what the running cost is of a new diesel and a new gas bus right now? I mean, we can ballpark.
I think it's a hundred and fifteen thousand.
For a diesel.
Yeah, well, no, we're buying gas.
We are buying gas.
Yes.
So it's a hundred and fifteen for a gas bus?
Yes. Isn't that what Tyler said?
A hundred and fifteen is, is the number that's kind of coming into my mind.
So we need to have $460,000 every year in our operational budget, just above the buses. Over and above the other stuff. And, and look, and I understand why people wanted to put it in the capital budget at one time. And money wise, I'm sure it does qualify to be a capital expense, but I don't know of any rule that says it has to be a capital expense.
Everybody looks at Shannon. I don't think there's.
Well, I know it was in the operation budget at one time.
I don't, but I would question a lot of these things in here as capital expenses and not operational maintenance kinds of expenses.
You mean, it should be operational work.
You know, we, we provide services to other vehicles that the county own that we, that, that still comes out of our budget that we, we don't use. You know, it provides a service to the whole county, just because they're serviced out of our shop, we incur that cost.
What are we servicing? Are we servicing all the county vehicles and sheriff?
We are working on that. We have, we are working with the sheriff to design schedules to be able to maintain some things. But where that comes into play is when, you know, you have your supervisor of transportation driving routes and maintenance driving, you know, some other people driving routes, so it pushes everything back. For the C buses, we say 115, but I think we start to see some of this running cost pushing up to 130 and 135. So, you know, in different areas and we, we primarily work through sunny Merriman. But that, there is a range, but we're, I think, the more we go, we're starting to see it push up a little bit closer to that.
Because now we had the air conditioning.
Yeah, and I was going to say, in, in this day and age, like when we go purchase a new bus, it's, we're looking, you know, to have air conditioning on it because we, we recognize it's only going to get warmer.
I don't think it's only going to get warmer, I think his kids are used to air.
Only going to get warmer. Okay, that's a conversation for another night.
But, you know, and, and those, but those are conversations we have with our families. Those are the concerns that are expressed. And if you, you know, I mean, to retroactively fit it, you know, that is just. And I, I would also venture to imagine we also have a lot, the production is leaning towards that as well in many instances. For one, if you put me on a bus for longer than a minute, I'm going to struggle too. Not with the heat, but the motion, so.
I mean, it's not a comfortable ride for an adult anyways.
I'd like to point out a couple of projects on here, just because I didn't know exactly what to do with them. Because I didn't know if there were going to be any requirements with the financing that the work be done solely at the high school. I know that the storefront windows in both of our cafeterias are failing and that both of them need to be replaced. But one is at the high school and one's at the middle school. If our funding doesn't allow us to do the middle school, we would have to pay for that with local funds. So I left that on the plan because it wasn't identified as high school. And also the road repair, I know that some of the road costs are for the middle school sections. And I didn't know, again, if financing had restrictions on it. I don't know how that's going to be borrowed and if it's only going to be the high school that we can use the funds on, whether we could use it on the whole bus.
The other thing that Ms. Powell and I talked about was the bollards and stuff for the two elementary schools. We were, we were moving with the safe, you know, with the grant money to getting those things done. But, you know, there again, debt needs to be moved on.
I actually would argue that I'd rather have playgrounds done before the safety bollards. We could take the old equipment and put it in front of this school temporarily till we got a safety grant to pay for the bollards, you know? We're not going to get a playground grant.
Yeah, I mean, the playgrounds are suffering too, but.
The state school security equipment grant wouldn't allow us to put bollards up with those monies now. I don't know if that would allow us to use a local match to do that or not. I can pose that question because there is a 25% local match.
Can you use your magic? I, we've talked about that a couple of times. I just, I want us to be pretty consistent across all the schools from a safety perspective.
You want them to be red and change them to immediate.
Oh, red, okay, in my head, I went to the color of the bollards.
This is not matching the aesthetic of the school.
This is neither our school colors or our division colors or, you know, like if it's a, you can have a tiger face if it's in front of, yeah.
Yeah, I got one more question. So how close are we here with the cameras on the buses out? How many buses are we short on cameras? You know, I mean ballpark.
I don't know, I know that there, I think there is a camera on every bus and I don't know that they all work.
Well, that is a different conversation is in working through the, the cameras that we do that aren't working and making sure that we have them in a process of repair, we're repairing them.
And I really would like multiple cameras on buses, just so that they can get better views.
Right, yeah. I mean, we can identify if we get to that point, which buses need multiple cameras starting out.
And, and that is another aspect with new buses, like obviously with new buses and new technology. And, and that is something that Mr. Ashley is very passionate about, is making sure the security aspects of our buses. And being able to, you know, they're, they're working towards different strategies, be able to, you know, when you have wifi, then you can, the bus drivers can have access to things that can provide it, you know, to update some things a little bit faster. But the cameras, yes, all have buses, all buses have cameras. Some need upgrades. So that, I mean, that, that's great, particularly for a community like this that they all do. But some of the older buses may just have one camera. They also have, you know, audio, which is fantastic. So there's a lot of aspects and what to go for and what to get. And those are focus points on new purchases to be able to make sure that we have the opportunity to put updated materials in that, but also going back through on some of our older buses.
You know, they, wifi costs with the technology now should be down for vehicles because just about every vehicle you got has, you know, has a hotspot.
We are exploring putting wifi's on buses. It is now an E-rate eligible service, so 90% of the cost would be spent by the federal government to offset that cost for us. And so the other 10% we have, we think that we might be able to recoup through Medicaid funding for tracking special ed transportation. So we think it, we might be able to get that at no cost to Nelson, but we're, we're working through that right now.
Do you guys have some magic to do? Is there any, we talked about the playground equipment and I, I did, I, I get that, I think that's, that's a priority. Is there any thought, could we get donors from corporations, like could, could things like playground equipment be sponsored by big business somewhere?
I think you could put a plaque out if your policy would allow it. I think there is a policy that we put in place years ago that did not allow corporate advertising and those kinds of things. But, you know, I think you can amend that.
We could, we could control the signage.
It was like signs on the fencing or whatever.
Well, there's athletic sponsorships and donations. Yeah, like I wonder, could we do that same thing for, and I don't know, I mean, this is just, we're hitting times where we're not going to have access immediately to do all the things we want to do. So we have to think. And is that a possibility? Somebody want to do a governor's school project? You know, I mean, Ray did one and, I mean, got a cool piece of equipment. So I, I think we're just going to have to think.
Yeah, I changed the number here to seventy-five thousand on each one. We got a quote for a slide at Ty River and it was in excess of $60,000.
A slide?
Just a slide?
No, it was also curving and mulch and other things involved in it too, so. Yeah, installation, so it was, but it's true, I mean, even, it's very expensive. Yeah, gone are the days where you have that one metal bar.
See, I grew up with like these big landscape, like huge, you know, like railroad timber thing that tied to get in like every splinter you could possibly get and the hot, and the hot metal slide. You got third degree burns going down.
Lost cement, I might add, so. But we're, we. It doesn't kill you, so, right? We found something we're looking for, we want to be safe.
But I mean, all, I mean, they've been fighting that absorbing heat thing, they tried the plastic, they've tried coatings. It all, it sets out with no shade, so it all absorbs heat, so that, I mean, that.
Well, you can put a shade in.
That's the human element that you like, that's going to be hot, so we're not going to let them use that today.
Like an airplane used to be in McIntyre Park, it was really.
I mean, we had an operational cannon out in front of the high school for years.
That was playground equipment.
Yeah, it was. Every pitcher, every senior pitcher was taking it in front of that thing.
And I've got one question, the roadway repair on here, did we ever come to a conclusion on what the root cause was of the roadway damage? Because we, I didn't think we did.
That metal school scene called.
They came in and have done a study. Did y'all receive that in the last two, three, two or three weeks?
We'll go back and we'll send.
Because I know there was some discussion about how, how it was placed, the, the fill, how it was placed in the beginning. And then there was some other discussion about whether or not we have water source under it.
I think that's the biggest.
And that's, that's what it acts like. It doesn't act like usually if it's poor compaction on installation, it just starts falling apart. But when it starts sinking and material starts leaving, it's usually because there's water, water moving. Just, just curious, I mean, I, I, we need to get that fixed because it's not going to be any better. I just want to make sure we've got to.
It was identified by.
Is it like a creek or something?
They've given us several different options.
It could be a spring.
It's kind of like a Chevette or a Cadillac.
We'll be going for the Chevette.
Fill the hole in, or we can fix the problem.
Then they've given us three different options to pick from in terms of how much money do you want to devote to outside versus inside.
Right, 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 I remember that.
I mean, that's just like the track project with the erosion project. With the, you know, getting slurry in there to do that thing and.
Right.
Yeah, you know, that's a big cost to.
But look at what we have now because if we had applied it on top of that old base, there's no telling.
Yeah, if we had just repaved it, then we would probably start seeing recurring problems now with the moisture we've had.
So we kind of bled over a little bit. We're probably at or into school board discussion, so just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to kind of run through. So Mr. Perkins, if you want.
I think I said that.
Same thing, I think we're going to have to be prepared to realistically start talking about where we may have to make some adjustments. I think realistically, like it or not.
She's getting ready to pass out.
I know, I know. But it, it's going to have to happen. I mean, at the end of the day, we know that I don't like it and I am going to publicly disagree with the LCI's I do every single time because I think we're a district that is incredibly hurt by that, incredibly handicapped by that. So, you know, when I look at our, our data, it's even with the lift and what the cost of the 3% raise would be, it still doesn't touch what the loss of revenue does. I mean, we could handle the, we could handle the raise if that was all it was. But the loss of revenue is what's going to kill us and it's criminal to do that to a system like ours because it's crippling.
I totally agree with you and I want to say thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys have done. It just makes it so easy for us to go, oh, of course we should do this. But it is going to be hard this year, I have to agree with. But it is gonna be hard this year. I have to agree with everybody else, but I would also remember, I say this every year, that what we're tasked with is to provide a budget of need, uh, not something that necessarily looks pretty to everybody else. And we always have to adjust later when we find out what we get, but what we need is what we really, what we really need to put out there. So, you know, we don't have to need a Cadillac this year, right, but we need what we need. So I don't want anybody holding back in this iteration. I want us to be honest about what we need.
It's fine, we just don't need a Tesla.
Okay, fine, so, I'm still in the Chevy. But, um, I just, I just wanna say that, all right? At this stage, I think we need to really be honest about what we need, what we need to do our job, and what the kids need to get the most out of their experience in our school system. And, uh, I mean, there's, it's a lot of different pieces that we have to put together, and like I said, I don't, I feel like it's important that we not be short right now, you know what I mean? And be parsimonious before we have to be.
You won the Bayboard Award for parsimonious.
And also the number of people.
Yeah, you won that too. So I, I wanna echo everything that you all have said. I totally disagree with the way the LCI is calculated. I know sometimes, a lot of times, most of the time, all the time, that falls on deaf ears in Richmond. But little localities like ours that are rural in nature and, for better or worse, we have chosen to base our economy on agritourism. And it makes for a beautiful county and a great place to visit, uh, but it doesn't necessarily bring in tons of revenue, and so then we're operating off of other things. And the LCI hurts communities like ours that people wanna come and visit. And that ultimately hurts the children, it hurts the families of the children, it hurts the people that work in our school system that live here also and live other places, so. And, you know, again, I just wanna echo that I, I cannot say strongly enough that school buses are, or, to me, they're a critical concern. They are always a big concern, but they are a critical concern right now. If we need four buses a year, over five years, that identifies twenty new buses needed, and we've only bought four buses total in the last five years. And, and we haven't laid any money out, any county money out for any of those four buses. Two of them were federally funded electric school buses with chargers, and then two of them came from S R, was it S R two funds? You know, that are non-recurring one-time funds. And while we appreciate all those funds, they need, this needs to be put in to our operational budget, um, to be able to do that. And, um, and I, and I don't necessarily wanna cut back on anything that we're, we're asking for. I just, you know, we need to ask for what we can ask for, but we're only gonna get what the community is able to fund, because we don't have the ability to tax, not that I want that, because I don't, but we also don't have a revenue sharing agreement, uh, like a lot of localities have, which would be nice at times, because then at least you know what you have coming in, um, based on certain things, it'll have certain benchmarks and triggers. And, you know, and again, you know, we're gonna, our enrollment is gonna continue to fluctuate as, as long as, um, people identify things like COVID as, as impacting their children, and when our enrollment drops, by and large, it's people that leave the school system that have the ability to leave the school system. And then our costs line up going up because we are, have more kids or higher percentage of kids that are in need of services. And, and that raises, raises our budget, and, you know, other items, other tangible items, other salaries and benefits and fuel and books and all these other things, they don't ever come down, so. As much as I like to try to keep a reasonable lid on things, you know, we, we've gotta have what we've gotta have in order to educate the kids, you know, the best that we can, so.
Educate them and keep them safe.
That's exactly right, because the more educated they are, then, then the better citizens they're gonna be, and the less they're gonna need services down the road.
Exactly. Pay for them now or pay for them later.
You know, and it's not, you know, with the mental health piece, we're not only talking about the kids, we're talking about our teachers now too. We're talking about the families, you know, like I said before, we're tasked with stuff to come out of our budget that's really not education. You know, we have to provide certain things that, it's not educational based, but it goes hand in hand with providing education, cause, you know, if the kid is struggling mentally, that may not be just the kid, it may be the parent too. So now we're, you know, we're partnering with people, we have this agency, we're trying to provide family counseling and all these things that's not directly linked to education, but it is.
Can't do Bloom's until you do Maslow.
Right, so, you know, if they, they don't have a clear mind coming in the building, then you can't get stuff in it that they need.
Think back just over the last four years, when I came on, and how many presentations did we have about mental health then? And now every meeting, it feels like we have some kind of presentation tied to, to mental health and the impact on it.
Yes, yes.
Exacerbated by COVID. What, it was. There's been a marked increase in all of that since COVID. It's undeniable.
Well, and whatever anybody's belief on that is, we are where we are, and we have the needs that we have. And, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's amazing, the multi-fold increase we've seen.
Yeah, and I mean, and that, so, for the most part, our students have, you know, done well in certain areas, and they continue to do well. But we do see that need, cause we have that group of people that need that mental health. You know, and it's not always tied to, you know, sped kids, it's, it's, it's across the board.
Every child. Well, I would actually even add that it's community-wide, and, and what we're doing by providing is, you know, extra things, is just being good community partners.
Right.
Trying to, you know, strengthen the, you know, the one Nelson theme is that we're all in this all together and we're all doing what we have to do to, you know.
The all-together part is, we're all together when the services are provided, but we're not all together when it comes to paying for them. I mean.
What happened to the group? There was a group that went locally, a million dollar group. What happened? Okay, I mean, let's just, I don't, I can tell you about it.
All right.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, so we were at the part in the meeting, um, where we would normally go into closed sessions, but I don't think we have to go into closed session unless we need to discuss.
Oh.
The P A R. Is that correct? We have a P A R.
We do have one?
You have a link to it in your agenda.
So apparently it doesn't. So we don't need to go with.
So we can go into closed session and discuss the P A R, or we cannot go into closed session and you can review it, and if you don't have any comments or discussion, then we can.
It didn't load into my. Do you wanna like a mine?
Yeah.
You already looked at it?
If you all feel like we need to go, then we'll go.
What's your feeling?
I'm feeling like we need, there's.
Yeah, we should probably discuss this.
Cause there's a lot of confering going on right there.
We should.
So, all right, let's do it. Is it just for personnel?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so let's do it. All right, I need a motion to certify, uh, certification of closed meeting for personnel.
I move that the school board go into closed session to consider personnel positions as authorized by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one for the purpose of discussion or consideration of employment with assignments, appointments, promotions, or resignations of employees.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
I agree.
We're in closed session.
Hi, I'm Sarah Vier, the adapted special education teacher at Nelson Middle School, and this is our coffee shop, A Little Something Special.
So what do I, oh, please, somebody else.
Yeah, bring him.
Not sure.
Um, the librarian, Tina, she gave us the idea to get the grant, and she helped us write for a grant, and we received it. And once we got the grant, we decided to start coming up with ideas on how to make this the best for the students. Um, we wanted a name that really incorporated all of them, and so we came up with A Little Something Special. We, um, the goal is for the kids to learn life skills and functional skills in a safe environment, but skills that are gonna help them to grow and become independent adults, um, and have success in their future.
Right. What do you have to do now?
So, for your eyes. For one of these. Do you see this line right here? It's at this line. You got it. Since he's not here today, so let's see, what does she want in it? She wants the special, which is our caramel. Do you know which one's the caramel? Perfect.
Okay, so now let's do this.
A Little Something Special is open for faculty and staff of Nelson Middle School and Nelson County Public Schools. Um, we only are allowed to sell to staff, and we want to do that to ensure the safety of our students and to let them build confidence in an environment that they're comfortable with people that they know and love them, and do the best they can for our community. Order up. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Delicious.
She said delicious. What do you say?
Delicious. Thank you.
Good job. All right, you got another order, baby.
Hot chocolate with, with half and half.
Hi, I'm Sarah Vier, the adapted special education teacher at Nelson Middle School, and this is our coffee shop, A Little Something Special.